Good evening and welcome to the City of Pasco Regular Meeting on this May fifteenth of two thousand and twenty-three. The council thanks you for being part of your government. At meetings, the city council takes formal action on items, holds public hearings, and conducts other business of the city. Agenda packets are available on the City of Pasco's website at www.pasco-wa.gov/agenda. And this meeting is also being televised on PSC TV Channel one ninety-one on Spectrum Cable in Pasco and Richland, and is streamed on the city's Facebook page, website, YouTube channel, and GoToWebinar. This and previous council meeting videos available on the website. Lastly, the public may submit their comments and/or questions by contacting the city manager, city clerk, or by using the Ask Pasco app. With that done here, we move on to item two. If the clerk could please call the roll.
Yes. Council members Brown.
Present.
Campos.
Present.
Milne.
Present.
Roach.
Present.
Serrano.
Here.
Mayor Protem Maloney.
Present.
And Mayor Barajas.
Excuse this evening.
Thank you.
All right, with that, we'll move on to the Pledge of Allegiance. If you all please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. We'll move on to item four on the agenda, the Consent Agenda. All items listed on the Consent Agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by roll call vote as one motion. There will be no further, no separate discussion of these items. If further discussion is desired by council members, the item may be removed from the Consent Agenda to the regular agenda and considered separately. We have item A, Approval of Meeting Minutes for May first and May eighth meetings. We have the Bills and Communications approving the claims in a total amount of fourteen million eight hundred and ten thousand one hundred and twenty-one dollars and sixty-three cents. And we have Resolution number four three four eight, Interlocal Agreement for Special Investigations Unit to Investigate Officer Involvement Incidences. That's everything we have on the Consent Agenda. Do we have any items that would like to be removed? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the Consent Agenda.
I move to approve the Consent Agenda as read.
All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Milne. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, seconded by Councilmember Serrano. Can we get a roll call, please?
Uh, Councilmember Serrano?
Yes.
Councilmember Campos?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Milne?
Yes.
Councilmember Roach?
Yes.
And Mayor Protem Maloney?
Yes. All right, Consent Agenda approved unanimously. We'll move on to item five, Proclamations and Acknowledgements. We actually have two proclamations to read today, and I'm excited to, excited to do so. Both these are really important parts of the city, and honestly, where we spend a whole lot of tax dollars going to these two departments to make sure that our city is functioning well and is safe. So we'll start with item five A, National Police Week and Peace Officers Memorial Day Proclamation. So this is for National Police Week, May fourteenth to May twentieth of two thousand and twenty-three. Whereas the City of Pasco Police play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the citizens of the City of Pasco, and whereas it is important to all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their police, and whereas the City of Pasco Police recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression, and whereas the men and women of the City of Pasco Police unceasingly provide a vital public service, now therefore I, Craig Maloney, Mayor Protem of the City of Pasco, Washington, call upon all citizens of the City of Pasco and upon all patriotic civic and educational organizations to observe the week of May fourteenth through May twentieth, twenty-three, uh, two thousand and twenty-three as National Police Week. With appropriate ceremonies and observances in which all of our citizens may join in commemorating law enforcement officers past and present who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to their communities, and in doing so have established for themselves an enviable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. I further call upon all citizens of the City of Pasco to observe Monday, May fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of those law enforcement officers who through their courageous deeds have made the ultimate sacrifice in service of their communities or have become disabled in the performance of duty, and let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors of our fallen heroes. All right, with that, Deputy Chief Cook, would you like to say a few words?
I would. On behalf of the Chief Roski and Pasco Police Department, we appreciate the support that our community gives us and the council has given us over the years, and where we are at today is because of that support and the good staff that you have brought on to our department. Chief Roski is back at the National Memorial now, representing the City of Pasco. Our, our people have a lot of influence in many, many places, and he certainly is one of those people. And we have members of our staff here and Officer Orth to accept that proclamation, and we appreciate that.
Thank you so much, Deputy Chief. And I just want to say, just even just having a conversation, just minutes spending with our officers, even just before the meeting today, just reminded me of how, how Pasco has really taken a leadership role in the state of Washington and across the country in terms of showing how we can do business, how our police officers can be effective at protecting those various sort of rights that I was reading in this proclamation, as well as leading by example of showing how things can be done efficiently, effectively, and in partnership with the community. I am really proud of our police, and I think I speak for all of our council members when I say that this is, this is a fantastic organization, one which we, we continue to, when you ask for, for support, we, we're standing there ready to give it, so. Any other comments by council members? Councilmember Brown?
Just a quick one, just a big thank you for all that you do. And you do have wonderful community engagement, and I'm a recipient of that, so I appreciate all that you do, and hats off to Chief Roski. I'm not in his absence, he's off working, so he's present in spirit, but what a great job you guys have been doing, so I appreciate it, thank you.
Councilmember Milne?
Yeah, I just want to say that the times that I've gone on the police ride-alongs, it's been some of the highlights of my time here on council that I'm just amazed on how you guys know the different people in the community and just, just the whole training and everything that goes along with Pasco PD. It's been, again, a privilege, and again, that's one of the things that, some of my best stories here on council is one of done the ride-alongs, and again, it's always a joy, and hopefully I'll be able to do some more this summer, so thank you.
Councilmember Serrano?
Yeah, I just, I'll echo the same sentiments. Thank you for the work that you all do. It doesn't go unnoticed. I know often you guys probably feel like it's, it's an underappreciated job, but it's certainly appreciated, and it's, it's a blessing to have men and women who are engaged in our community like you are protecting it, so thank you.
All right, and gentlemen?
Speak enough of our socials. When you give that to us, can we take a picture?
Yeah, if you want to come on up, John's asked me to make sure to get some pictures, so yeah, I'll join up here.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Officer Orth.
All right, again, what a, what a, what an honor, and you know, again, I think one of the important parts is, is also honoring those that have, that truly have given their, given their lives for, in service of our community. Let's not neglect that part of it. I know we've had some close encounters over the last few years, and I'm grateful that that is not something that has to be top of mind for us right now, but we should never forget that. All right, well, we'll move on to item five B, Public Works Week Proclamation. So again, celebrating and recognizing other members of our, of our city staff that do just an excellent job for us. So, let's see, there we go. So Public Works Week for May twenty-first to May twenty-seventh of two thousand and twenty-three. Whereas public work services provided in our community are an integral part of our, of our citizens' everyday lives, and whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as water, sewer, streets and highways, public buildings, and solid waste collection, and whereas the health and safety and comfort of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services, and whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, construction, and continued maintenance is vitally dependent on the efforts and skill of public works employees, and whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work that they perform, now therefore I, Craig Maloney, Mayor Protem of the City of Pasco, Washington, do hereby proclaim May twenty-first through May twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-three as Public Works Week. Director Worley, would you like to say a few words?
Yes, I just want to say thank you to council for the recognition of National Public Works Week. It is next week, and also recognition for all of the hard work that our men and women in the Public Works Department do every day twenty-four seven, three sixty-five to help keep this community running. And so tonight, we have Daniel Walker from our wastewater treatment plant here tonight to accept the proclamation from Mayor Protem Maloney.
Excellent. Thank you, Director Worley. And you know, I'll just say a few words of when, when, when people ask me, what does the city do? What do we, what are we here for? Why do we, why would they want their government here? Public Works and Police are the first two things that could come to mind. If you want to know what the cities do and need to do very well, it's these two services. And so this, I really like the pairing here, because I think this really highlights, highlights what does the city do most and what does the city do best? And what is specifically Pasco do better than anybody else? So very excited for that. So entertaining, any comments by my fellow council members?
I do have one correction. Water treatment, or Daniel, not wastewater treatment. I apologize. And since ride-alongs are so important for some of the council members, I invite you for a sewer vector truck ride-along or a snowplow ride-along. We are more than happy to give ride-alongs as well, just like PD.
Excellent. Thank you for the offer. I'll start with Councilmember Brown.
Just a quick, I think it's all been said, Director Worley, you did a good job. Just want to say thank you again for the service, and I love how each department connects to the, to the public. That's huge, so I appreciate it. We'll keep it short. You said enough, but I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Serrano?
Thank you. Well, not a ride-along. I've dropped down and visited the folks at our, at the, where they're housed for the Public Works Department, which also includes the wastewater treatment plant. It's awesome going in there. My recollection was one of the first things I saw was a big vision board that had council goals and how they were aligned with that. And I, you know, that was one of the first times I went down, just to recognize the effort of a particular department to say, hey, this is to your point. We're one of the most critical services provided by the city, and here's how we see ourselves in what the seven of us collectively have decided were the most highest priorities. So I appreciate their effort to achieve and exceed our, our expectations and goals, but also, you know, it's nice to not have to call on them like we do the fire and police of, hey, you know, the sewer's overflowing and X, Y, and Z. We understand that times, stuff like that happens, but they're always spot on. You know, they had a whole plan for snow and ice removal. Unfortunately, we, we didn't get a read through all those pages, John, I'm sorry. But, but we know you guys are ready, and that's, that's what's really important, so thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much. With that, I'd invite whoever be?
Speaking of public works, do we have the heater or the air conditioning on? Maybe it's just me, but it seems pretty warm in the room.
That's facilities.
Oh, okay. Well, they don't get a proclamation, but if we can make sure the AC is going, that'd be a deal.
I would agree.
If we need to proclaim something at Jesse right now, I can wing it. What I'll do is I'll make sure that we wrap up this meeting as quickly as we can, so I'll move on to the next item on here. Item six, Public Comments. The public may address council on any items unless it relates to a scheduled public hearing. This item is provided to allow the opportunity to bring items to the attention of city council or to express an opinion on an issue. Its purpose is not to provide a venue for debate or the posing of questions with the expectation of immediate response. Some questions require consideration by council over time and after deliberative process with input from a number of different sources. Some questions are best directed to staff members who have access to specific information. Citizen comments will be, will normally be limited to three minutes each. Those with lengthy messages are invited to summarize their comments and/or submit written information for consideration by the council outside of formal meetings. With that, I'd ask any member of the public that'd like to come and address us to please do so at this time. Yes, ma'am, if you can please just go ahead and step to your podium and let us know your name for the record.
I want to thank you guys first, because that's a lot of work. My name is Terry Thomas, and I live over on Sylvester and Twenty-Fourth in Sundard's apartment, as do all the people that came with me. There's been an issue with motorhomes and trailers parked on our street with garbage, and they stack their shopping carts over there. Kids are out there, their dogs are out there. We take our dogs on walks around the block. We are trying to avoid that area, and now you can't get on the sidewalk because they've got their stuff piled there. We've called the police numerous times. Their hands are tied. They said, come to the council meeting, which is why we're here. Apparently, one of the issues is they can't find a tow truck company that will come and tow them out even after they ticket them. Tags are expired. Some just moved here from Oregon two weeks ago. They're dogs, they have dogs, and as I tried to go that way, their dogs charged me this morning, and I had to grab my little dog and run across the street with it. It's a dangerous area. They're doing drugs out of them. Some are abandoned, and people have moved into them and put plastic in the doors of them. Now they've moved out and the plastic's gone, but as I went by, there was like four people sitting on the sidewalk there doing drugs, selling drugs. They didn't care if I was standing there watching or passing by. And so we're all over fifty-five in our community, some up to ninety-five, and it's scary. It never used to be scary in our neighborhood. So we ask you guys, find some way to get rid of those people, not their people, but it's not, it's like a junkyard. We safely don't live in that area anymore. And again, I want to thank you guys, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mayor Protem Maloney, can I make a quick comment?
Please.
So my sister lives off Twenty-Sixth and Henry. There was an incident where one of these people that lived in these motorhomes was attempting to get into their yard, so there was a police report made. If there's any effort that council can do, I don't know what the issue is, if a tow truck is not willing to tow, I'm assuming it probably has to do something with the Blake decision. It goes back to Councilman Serrano's comments the other week. I think it's very important that we try to get that out in front of us as soon as possible, so that this doesn't happen to, to more people. Luckily, nothing that we can tell happened over at my sister's place, but still, that's not a scenario that you really want to encounter. Same, similar scenario. Made a police report. What I understand is the police are working on it, but I want to make sure that we have the support that they need to be able to do something about the situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Campos. I echo your sentiment and your words there very much. I, staff has taken note of this. We'll take a look. Great. Thank you. Please, ma'am.
My name's Anita Rodriguez, and I also live on, I also live on Sylvester. I work, I go to work in the mornings, and I've witnessed, I've gone out there, they're out there using drugs. They're just, there are a lot of children, there's, there's a school just on the other side of Sylvester, and there are a number of children that are walking through that area to get to school. And I honestly, it's not, we don't know what kind of, you know, when people are on, are on drugs, they do crazy things. So, and I've also, there was, I've called the police one time because there was, I was driving by, and there were over twenty, like, gang members that were ready to get into a fight. And it's right behind the motel, I mean, the, the apartment complex right back there. So, yeah, we really need, I used to feel safe. I don't, I don't sleep well at night anymore. So we're really hoping you can do something for us.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other comments from the public?
My name is Gloria Augusta. I live in the same area. I wasn't there very long, but when I first moved, I was going to do my laundry, and those people started using our laundry mat. And I caught a guy, one of the guys there buttoning it the first time there, because he hadn't locked the door, because he had nowhere to keep warm. And then we caught a few urinating behind our facility, because we have a back and front door, and there's no cameras. And we're not safe. Down there where they're at, it stinks. They're putting their dumpster in our dumpster, and we have a gazebo where the ladies want to go smoke or have a conversation. They'll go through the garbage and find cigarette butts and smoke, and it's gross. You know, we're not safe. So like, something's got to be done. Because there's a lady's been there for thirty years, and she's nine, she likes to walk everywhere. We're kind of scared that something's going to happen to her. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other member of the public that'd come and speak to us? Ma'am first and then we'll? Tag teaming, all right.
He wants to hang out with me.
If you could please say, if you could please say your name for the record?
I am Jean Reichman.
And Edison Polario.
So I think we need one more proclamation. I think we need one for the city council members who come here every Monday night, spend every Monday night here at City Hall. Not, and in addition, you have to study that packet before you get here. You guys really invest a lot of time, and some of us really appreciate that. Now that I buttered you up, I'm here to talk about Vinnie's Bakery. We're all concerned, of course, about losing that iconic bakery in Pasco. And we, we really need to do what we can to help them. The reason I'm here talking to city council is just in case I can maybe plant a seed or two. Perhaps there's some kind of grant funding that might be available, even on a loan basis or a percentage basis would be helpful. Anything that city council is able to do will be greatly appreciated. Vinnie isn't here tonight. He doesn't want to ask for money, but we all want him to succeed. He's had a lot of, a lot of challenges since he opened his bakery, and he's done a lot of good. And our, our police have helped him out with some of those challenges, and we appreciate that. There is a GoFundMe account set up, and we've been getting some donations through that. And if you haven't seen it, you can Google GoFundMe Vinnie's Bakery, and you might have to scroll down a little bit, you'll find it.
So most of you know who I am, and I know most of you personally, so, but it's really nice to be formally here talking to you. It feels kind of weird, like on the microphone and videos, all that, but we're just, we're citizens. We are community members. You guys know what we're about, which is helping small businesses. So Jean, as a leader of the community for many years, Feliz Vargas is not here, but on his behalf, he asked me to be here representing, asking to see what the city can do to help Vinnie's to open his doors. As a small business owner, I know the challenges, and you guys know it too. Yes, we had to be equitable. We know that we had to have, if we give them money, there's other two hundred businesses that probably needs, need the same. But at this point, right now, we're just asking for Vinnie, because he, doors is closed. They don't, they know how to do their, what they're good at it, which is bakery or whatever it is. But the finances and the business part of it really is challenging for small businesses, especially the Latinos. So what we asking once again is if anything that you guys can do to help either as a loan or anything that you can think of to help Vinnie's as a small business owner, but also as a community member, we're here to support him. Thank you very much.
Since you brought up the accounting part, that there, he's a good baker, but they don't necessarily achieve great accounting. I did talk to former Judge Jerry Roach, and he was going to contact Dan Boyd, who is an accountant here in Pasco, who has been doing a lot of work for a lot of people over the years. So we're trying to work all of those angles. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Good evening, Council. Stephen Baumann. I wanted to also say thank you, like Jean did, for you guys' commitment. It's amazing. Another, something that kind of broke my heart today. I represent a property owner that there's two camps started on that property. And so we asked what they would like to do about it, and so they asked us to try to address it, and they're out of town. And, and so this morning, we went and, and asked the people to leave, and they were very vulgar and, and, yeah, just not nice, and, and just trash and garbage, and, and so we talked to Pasco PD, and my heart went out to PD because they said there's really nothing we can do. We can ask them to leave, but we can't force them to leave. And that's, that's really heartbreaking that in our city, we have people trespassing that our law enforcement can't even make them leave. And so not sure what we can do about it. Certainly don't want Pasco to, to continue to have this problem. And if there's a way that we can figure this out together, I would, I would love to know how we can help from the private side. If there's something that the city can do, I don't know, but yeah, it was certainly disheartening to hear the, I don't know, the sadness in their voice when they said there's really nothing we can do. And, you know, they said, well, you can, you know, you can clean up the trash if you want to, but anyway, I think you know the, know the challenge, so thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else in the public want to, want to address council? Seeing none. Did you want to comment during the section, or do you want to wait till?
I just want to, kind of in response to these comments, Mr. Ferguson, I know that there's, you know, a there's, you know, a handcuffing that occurred from the Ninth Circuit, then the Supreme Court denying cert in Martin v. Boise, and, and I know that was dovetailed towards sleeping, uh, you know, the homelessness element. I think there's a little bit more at play here. I do know that, a- and this obviously won't impact this, from the Superior Court of Maricopa County, um, down in Phoenix, a Superior Court judge actually ruled that they had a place like the place in Spokane. They called it the Zone down there. And the judge ruled to clean it up there. Now, again, I understand this isn't binding on us. Uh, it's the Superior Court in Arizona, it does nothing for us. But to the extent that that may be a resource for your office, I'd be happy to share that decision with you. And again, I know it's non-binding, it's not gonna help us. Uh, but I think maybe there's a way that we can thread the needle between what Martin actually said and implicates compared to what other jurisdictions who are bound by the same Ninth Circuit precedent, uh, that we may be able, you know, I don't wanna try to ferret this out on the fly, but I just wanna make sure in case you're not aware of that case from Maricopa, be happy to share that with you. Thank you.
Councilman Compost?
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor Protemaloni. Again, I, I think I'm on the same page as Councilman Serrano here. I don't necessarily wanna get into this, but on a strike while the iron's hot, I did talk with some, uh, my counterparts over in, uh, in Kennewick. And they basically adopted City of Richland their solution to what's been going on, and they said that talk, talking with their PD, they've seen very positive results almost immediately. So, um, there's gotta be a solution that, that's kinda commercial off the shelf for us. I don't know why we would need to spend a lot of time on it, and then, again, looking forward to workshopping it with the rest of you, uh, whenever staff brings it back to us.
Appreciate that, and I will, I will echo onto that so that we're more towards providing, uh, staff direction, if that's okay. Um, um, no, nothing formal, I think, at this point in time. I think we're all very interested in understanding what we can do with this, uh, what we could do with, um, in terms of, um, trespassing folks who are maybe in our public parks, as a friend said, smoking, um, like, you know, or doing drugs, you know. There's a number of things where we've been, we've been hearing about this for a while. I'm seeing other communities start to try to resolve it. Um, we don't necessarily need to be the first ones leading everything, but if there's something we can, we can look at adopting, I would, I would very much be interested in understanding a, you know, a report back from, from staff about, tell us about, more about the lay of the land here, what our options are, and what options are not. Um, I know every community's different, um, but, um, even across the river, it should be something very similar to the sort of things that perhaps we'd be able, able to, to approach. Um, so, if, if, if that's what I understood by, by staff.
The, the public comments and paying, paying good attention to those and, and heard what you've had to, uh, advise us on, and so, we'll, we'll, we'll come back with some more information and, and ideas. So, thank you.
Great. Thank you. Oh.
I just wanna say we, I think we have unanimous support on this. I actually have seen pictures of, uh, mobile homes, trailers in Richland, like Columbia Point, and then they kicked them out, and then they ended up at the Happo Center, um, in their parking lot or by the baseball field. So, I know, obviously, other cities, when they kick them out, sometimes they end up coming here, and anything we could do, I mean, again, you feel bad for them, but on the other hand, we have business to run. Um, you know, we have the city that we want to look nice as well, so I'm just saying, I think everybody's on board. Anything we could do to clean up our town and make it look better, I think we're, we're all for it.
Thank you. Any other? Thank you. Councilman Brown?
Yeah, just a comment, if anything, to take note. I know that when we began to talk about how to transition, and, you know, kinda like you said, city, the city moved around, but that, what's the end result of root cause analysis on, on why this is happening? How can we help them? There's something else going on. Is it mental? Is it, you know, just a bad displacement that's happening, but not just move them, but how can we restore them? What can we do as a city that says, you know, maybe it's housing, maybe it's food, maybe it's, again, like I said, mental. So, even in that research, it would be nice to see how we can have a long-term effect instead of, you know, just shifting them from one place to another. How can we be instrumental and, um, bringing them up to the next level, to be a part of the community, a part of the city, instead of a, and I use this word, a nuisance? How can you be an intricate part of what's happening in this great city instead of the shift happening? So, I'll even sign up and help with that. I mean, whatever it takes, we gotta do it together. So, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, with that, I don't see any lights on, and no other people in the public, so we'll go ahead and move on to item number seven. Uh, reports from committees and or officers. Do you have any verbal reports from, uh, council? Councilman Compost?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I'll keep this short, sweet. We had a BFT, uh, Board of Directors meeting. We awarded some cool things for, uh, artists, local artists from, uh, local high schools. They designed some wraps for some of the new buses. We'll see some new artwork out there. Really, really neat stuff. Um, I think the grand prize winner, he won a iPad, kinda similar to what we have, and not only that, I think their teachers give a little gift certificate for supplies. So, it's just a cool little thing that we do. It's, it's fun to be a part of that. Um, and then, just being able to workshop what our service might look like for the River of Fire and, uh, Fair, and trying to provide a cost savings to, to everybody that's gonna hopefully use those services. I mean, they should. It's gonna be a huge cost savings. If you're using the parking, you know, fifteen dollars for parking, and you pay four dollars for a bus, and it'll get you in and out of there, and you have to deal with anything, uh, it's pretty smart, uh, in my opinion. So, we're, we're looking at trying to come up with creative ways to make sure that, that BFT is well represented and uh, provides a great service to the public.
Hey, thank you. Any other council members before I share mine? Alright, relatively quiet week. So, uh, last Thursday, um, I was able to attend the, um, um, housing presentation, um, done by so, um, by students that were working with, with the City of Pasco in terms of, of kind of options, some of the options we might be able to do to tackle housing affordability, long-term planning, that sort of thing. So, um, it's a great presentation, really, really smart, uh, folks, and I think this is their, this is their capstone project, so they'll be graduating soon, and you know, we wish them, we wish them the best. Um, uh, we'll be interested in getting, I think we, I think staff has received the full report as of Monday. I think they were supposed to receive it. Um, I haven't yet seen it, um, but I'm looking forward to kind of trying to glean through what sort of insights we have. Um, that will tie into our housing action plan overall, is my understanding. So, this'll be one component that'll help feed into that overall document to help us understand. How do we address affordability of housing, um, and, and how do we, how do we make sure that we have the right zoning, right, right resources in place? And how are we using the most grant and other funding options, um, that we may have available, that perhaps some of which we're using poorly or not at all? So, looking, I'm very much looking forward to that. And then, I had one other thing I'm gonna mention, just briefly, um, not sure it's really a City of Pasco thing, but nonetheless, um, my wife and I, some of our friends, went to Asparagus Fest over the Middleton Farms. That's always a blast. Um, um, it's great to see little community events, and, and reminding that, that from my house, it's like ten minutes until I'm in the middle of the country. Right? And that's something that, you know, I think is really important as we, um, as we grow our city, to keep in mind some of the reasons why people like to be in a city like Pasco is also that you're, you know, you're fifteen minutes, not just from anywhere in the tri-cities, but you're also fifteen minutes from the middle of nowhere. Um, and so, that's, that's always, uh, that, I think, is the great benefit of, 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 of where we live, and something that we want to protect as we look forward to housing options and how we approach planning long-term into the future. Alright, with that, um, this is gonna be a short part from here on out. I'm gonna be looking over to staff to correct me if I'm wrong or anything. Uh, we've got, um, hearings and council actions on ordinances and resolution relating there, too. I see nothing listed. Uh, item nine, ordinances and resolutions not relating to hearings, also none listed.
Correct.
Uh, unfinished business, nothing listed.
Yes.
New business, also nothing listed. Which brings us to miscellaneous discussion, and, uh, Director Buckley, I think you're standing in for, uh, for City Manager Lincoln, so please go ahead and, uh...
Uh, we, I just have a little bit of information, uh, to defend facilities. It wasn't warm in here till kind of right at the end of the day, and then I know Director Rice reached out right before the meeting, but not enough time to cool it off. I'm not sure what, but by next week, or next meeting, I'm sure it'll be cooler. So, thank you for being warm altogether. And then, um, the little police cars on the podium do have some Hershey's Kisses in them, I believe, um, but they might be melted by now, so...
Yeah, the chocolate fondue.
Yeah. But, so, those are there, very cute. And then, finally, we do have a good piece of information. It's exciting to announce that Dairy Gold is the new official sponsor of Pasco Recreation Youth Programs. Um, they're partnering with the city to provide access to more, uh, youth in the community, and I have a little list of things that they're supporting their, um, Pasco leagues like, uh, youth basketball, softball, and the PR runners, and all preschool programs with T-shirts, um, the novice swim team, Pasco Youth Scholarship Fund, after-school program, and, um, summer youth basketball camp. So, we're very thankful for that partnership, and, and, you know, it'll be good for the community and a lot of little people, so that's great. And that's everything that I have.
Excellent. Thank you, Director Buckley. Um, council.
And, I'm sorry, yes, and, and...
That's okay. No, go ahead.
No, I'm done. You go ahead. Thank you.
Great, sorry.
Just bring it up, please.
No, so, uh, I do, uh, hate to kinda spring this on you, but, uh, we do have a, a need for a little bit of, uh, uh, input from the council. The, uh, uh, the quote Blake Compromise Bill was, uh, released a little after three. You may have seen some of that, uh, in your inbox. Uh, it's a fifty-two-page bill. Uh, it's a four-page synopsis, uh, so there's a lot in there, a lot of nuances to it. Uh, I would like to kinda give you the highlights, and then I would like to try to get some direction. Uh, it'd be nice to be able to maybe even take some formal, uh, direction if, if council's, uh, comfortable with that. It's, that's not something we typically do without being noticed, and, uh, but this is something that, uh, requires, uh, immediate kind of turnaround. We were, it was released to us today at three o'clock, so if that's something that the council would entertain, um, deciding, uh, whether they wanna move forward and support that, I, it sounds like our delegation at the legislature uh, would like to hear our input, so, uh, but that's certainly something that, uh, the council has the opportunity to decide whether they wanna do or not. I'll just give you the greatest tips here. Uh, essentially, what, uh, the, the biggest, uh, uh, I guess most important kind of point, uh, to this is that it essentially recriminalizes or will continue to criminalize possession and use of, uh, of, uh, narcotics and, and drugs, uh, under, uh, there's some specifics about and some nuances about which ones, but essentially the ones that, uh, have been, uh, felonies previously, uh, and then with the most recent legislation or the most recent court case, um, uh, didn't, uh, have the same kind of protection. So, it essentially will make those, uh, uh, those possession of those and, and public use of those. Both of those will be gross misdemeanors. Um, so typically gross misdemeanors are three hundred and sixty-four days, uh, maximum five thousand dollar fine. In this case, it's, uh, a little bit of a, a, a horse trade with regard to they are gross misdemeanors, but, uh, maximum hundred and eighty days, uh, with a thousand dollar fine, uh, after the third or two prior convictions. So, on the third time, it would go up to three sixty-four and one thousand, uh, for penalties. Uh, the diversion by prosecutors and law enforcement is encouraged, uh, but not required, uh, as, uh, had been, uh, kinda negotiated back and forth with, uh, the legislature. Uh, the court may only grant motions for the diversion if the prosecuting attorney agrees. Um, so, the, the, the theme being that accountability for folks, uh, that have been, uh, sided with these, um, violations, uh, would, uh, would need to be, uh, obviously involved in those, um, or actively involved in, in their, uh, treatment. Uh, individuals must substantially comply with treatment for twelve months, uh, or by completing a recommended treatment services, whichever comes first, uh, for the diversion programs. Uh, local governments are preempted on regulating drug paraphernalia outside the harm reduction programs. Now, what that essentially means is that, um, drug, uh, drug paraphernalia will, uh, be legal, uh, and so, uh, other than, uh, the harm reduction programs, and that's a, that's a whole big portion of the bill. Harm reduction is essentially, uh, the ability to, uh, as I understand it anyway, is to, um, make sure that there's certain paraphernalia that's provided, uh, to, uh, to make sure that this, the, the folks, uh, that are using the drugs are able to then, um, use safe alternate or safe, uh, paraphernalia, so syringes, those types of things. So, and again, I don't wanna talk out of school and act like I know, uh, what all that legislation means, but, uh, you know, we could do some analysis and definitely figure out more of that, but we, uh, haven't had, uh, a chance to do that. So, essentially, um, this essentially makes possession of drug paraphernalia, syringes, pipes, et cetera, legal, so, uh, that, that would be included. Uh, the, and then finally, the, the, the last kind of a big thing would be that opioid treatment programs and recovery residences, substance use disorder treatment facilities and harm reduction programs, including safe injection sites, are added to the list of essential public facilities. Now, that's related to, uh, some of the planning things that we have to do under gross management. Uh, and so, I don't know what the actual effect of that is. I know uh, essential public facilities are typically, you know, airports, uh, other things that are difficult to locate, so this would be adding that to that. So, to what degree, uh, the state, uh, has essentially preempted our ability to, uh, uh, regulate where those go, uh, I, I can't say for certain, but I can say that they have been added to this quote essential public facilities, uh, list. So, um, with that, um, I think, uh, it's really up to the council to decide, you know, what they would wanna do next. I'll try my best to, to answer questions. I, I literally was reading it, uh, right before I got over here. Um, and so, I'll, I'll do my best, but, uh, yeah, it's kinda hot off the press.
So, thank you, uh, Mr. Ferguson. I was, that was a question I was gonna bring up, so I'm glad you, uh, you preempted me on that. When we say bipartisan, this was created by a, what we believe to represent a majority of legislators within the Capitol that would be able to pass this, or are we talking about a, you know, a pair of folks? Like, what, what is?
Yeah, this is what they're referring to as the Four Corners Agreement. So, uh, all four of the caucuses, uh, have, have come to this and think they have the support of their, of their members of the caucus, uh, to be able to support this bill. So, uh, it looks like this was, um, uh, a lot of, uh, hard negotiating went in to get this, and, uh, uh, at this point, it's really, um, it, a lot of folks are believing that this is really the best it's gonna be, um, and, and really kind of the only option, uh, going forward. Uh, so, uh, it'll be, it'll be interesting to see what happens if it, if it doesn't proceed.
And, and last question is, um, what, what you're asking of council tonight is, um, is, is a formal motion in support of this? Is that, or are you looking for head nods that no one across this council currently has any objections? Um, to, to having a lobbyist continue to support this? I, I wanna make sure we're, we're doing this right and proper, and, uh, so...
Well, we're, we're in a little bit of a no man's land. Typically, uh, we don't take action on items that haven't been, uh, noticed on the agenda. It's not, uh, per se illegal to take action on an item that's not on the agenda. Uh, there is some case law out there that describes, uh, items that would be of uh, substantial public concern and, uh, have, uh, uh, an effect that would require, uh, a lot of debate in certain items. I, I don't think that support of a piece of legislation would qualify, uh, on that, so, but that's certainly, um, and then, uh, the, the, I mean, the harm is that, okay, then whatever action was taken, uh, would have been nullified, so, which at that point, uh, really isn't a, a huge concern. So, I, I think it's, uh, it's, it's legally, uh, uh, sufficient, uh, for the council to take formal action tonight. Uh, it is unusual, but, uh, I think you could certainly do that, or, uh, if you'd, uh, if, if folks want to just to voice objections, uh, it's, it's certainly up to the board for the, for the council.
Okay, I appreciate that extra context, 'cause I know there's some very strong nuances about things that are not formally on our agenda already. Um, but all you're asking for, if I do, if I understand, um, mechanism aside, we're just, uh, your staff is asking, um, are we going to, as a city, be supported in, in signing it in favor of this law up in Olympia when they're taking public testimony, et cetera? So, we're basically giving direction to our lobbyist firm.
Uh, no, it sounds like our, our delegation, our local delegation of, of legislators is, is requesting, um, our, through our, through our lobbyist, uh, to, to get support, uh, uh, for this, uh, bill, uh, to determine whether the council does support it. So, they would like that direction, it sounds like.
Okay, alright, great. I appreciate, um, that significant set of contacts here, and I didn't see whose lights gone first, so I'm gonna go ahead and follow down what I think is, is where we're at in this. So, uh, Councilmember Brown, I believe you're up first.
Um, just a quick acknowledgement, and then we'll get back to the whole Blake thing. Um, I just wanted to, um, recognize that, um, I was very surprised and very happy to see Councilmember Roach on tonight. She was out on medical, as you all heard, but I'm just really happy to see her here tonight. That's, that's dedication to Pasco, and I just wanted to tell that, you know, as a resident also, I appreciate council members working this hard and coming in, and I'm glad she's restored, uh, almost back to a hundred percent, but she's here tonight, so I just wanted to recognize that she was here, and I appreciate her showing up, even getting up off her medical bed to be here on tonight. I appreciate it for the city.
Thank you.
Now we can do the Blake thing if you're ready.
Sure. Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you had, is, no, nothing, I'm in the Blake decision right now? You were first blink, bring in, so if you'd like to weigh, weigh in, this is the right time.
Sure, I'm, I'm in support of it. Um, there's a lot of nuances in there. I just wanna make sure, as always, just point of clarification. We will have further room to discuss this and go into some of the nuances that are there, or no?
No, this, this would be, uh, something that the state legislature, uh, would take action on, and, and we would then, uh, be subjected to, uh, those requirements, uh, under that. Now, there's some other action that we would still need to take in terms of, uh, being able to enforce, uh, these things locally, I believe, so I'd have to defer to our prosecutor to know exactly what those are, 'cause, uh, we're not allowed to, uh, uh, just randomly, uh, enforce state law. We have to adopt it by reference, so... Uh, just randomly uh, enforce state law. We have to adopt it by reference. So. Uh, if there's some issues that we would need to do to iron that out, that might come back before you, but uh, other than that, this is gonna be uh, what we're what we're stuck with. For good or worse, or better or worse.
I'm ready to move on.
Right, great. Thank you, Councilmember Brown. Uh, Councilmember Serrano.
Thank you. Um, I'm gonna start with what's going to be contradictory to what I'm gonna end with. This is probably as good as we're gonna get from Olympia. That said, you know, I got plenty of things I could sell you for a quarter, right? Um, we have four ladies standing, you're sitting right in front of us that, and a couple gentlemen back, a couple folks in the middle. Each of which have addressed some concerns about what Pasco in part is seeing, receiving, and has the potential to turn into. We need to take action, not just for these handful of people in chambers, but for everybody who lives in or passes through Pasco. That action needs to come from this council. I'm of the position that if we pass our own legislation, whether it's Nolan Void in forty-five days, we send a strong message to the constituents and Olympians. In Olympia, the people elected from inside and outside of this room. As well as to the people of Pasco who get to hear the seven of us standing for them. If we just say, hey, look, this is as good as it's gonna get, we're not even getting a seat at the table. Um, we're doing a great disservice to the people who've elected us. So, I'm of the position that we need to pass a bill of our own. Send it with our constituency and say, here you go. Negotiate from this. This is what Pasco needs. This is what our residents are living under. And these are the things that are problematic. And then we could send maybe even a quick page synopsis from Cheese Broski or or someone in your department. Deputy Chief Cook that could say, hey, look, this is how it's uh, handcuffing our organ, your organization. Um, and these are the things that we need the ability to navigate as a city. To your point, Eric, there's some significant preemption, potentially. That of zoning. Uh, that of the controlled use of paraphernalia. You know, I don't want my kids stepping on syringes or crack pipes, but under this law, those are lawful. Insofar as they're not being used to smoke or inject. Once they're abandoned, uh, they're there. So. This council needs to act on behalf of its residents. So, I'll leave it there.
Councilmember Campos.
Uh, thank you Mayor Protem Maloney. Um, as a planner by day, I I think having a contingency plan is always a smart move. Um, to Councilman Serrano's point, I do worry about the timeliness of it. I think that it. And this is no disservice to staff, it just, this is the speed of government, but if we rely on them to essentially come up with something. That exceeds this and meets our things, I don't think we're gonna meet that forty-five day. However, I mean, this could fall through the cracks completely anyway. So, uh, it still goes back. I think I I would support a contingency plan regardless of how long it takes to begin with. I think that we should. Um, you know, use this, cause we can always, and we've talked about this before, we're just working on putting moratoriums and lifting moratoriums. We can always exceed state law. So, um, I. I'm of the mind, this is fine. Um, looking at some of the language, it's important to me. Uh, I don't see anything that's important. Again, it's better than what we have currently. And um, I, again, I wanna see our Pasco Police Department and uh, other departments. Be able to go out and do their job and protect and serve the community. So, I think that's that's where I'm at. Uh, I do have. One other thing I was gonna talk about on miscellaneous.
Um, Mr. Campos, if we don't mind taking this action, I'll call back around for a final wrap-up. That's all right? Is that, is that okay? Great, thanks. I want to make sure we're giving clear direction to staff here. Appreciate it. Councilmember Roach.
Um, appreciate the previous comments that have been made, and I will say that as somebody who works till about five PM, I have not had a chance to read this. Um, before city council meeting tonight. And on principle, I'm not. I don't feel comfortable weighing in on a yes or a no that I'm in support of this until I have a chance to read it. Um. I would like to support our our Pasco PD. Um, and it is a good indication that the four corners are supporting it, but. I mean, this is several pages long and I I'd wanna read through this and. If there's additional comments to be made, then make those comments at that time instead of just. For the sake of expediency, just all saying yes. So that's where I'm at. I I don't feel comfortable with that.
Thank you, Councilmember Roach. Um, Councilmember Mill.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Or Mayor Protem, sorry. Um, yes, this is a very disturbing, but I will agree. I think Serrano was right on this. Um. I think just more needs to be done. I I can't say, um, last Friday, I happened to be on Court Street and saw a guy, I don't know what he was on, but he was picking up a ballot, throwing it. Yelling, screaming. I mean, I cleared, stay away from him, but it's something I wouldn't have seen five years ago, and it just seems like things are getting worse and worse, and our state doesn't seem to care. Um, you know, anything we could do, I think to let him know that, you know, we are trying to make Pasco safer. We're trying to support. Pasco PD and more needs to be done. And to say that uh, drug paraphernalia is fine to me, that's just, I just can't imagine that. I mean, it's. It's sad that this person's wasting his life there on Oregon Street, but it's sad that people have to deal with it trying to go into a business and you got this guy yelling and throwing stuff and uh. Um, I just think more needs to be done and especially communities where they're being pushed to. And you're used to one way of life and now you're being subject to something that they might like in Seattle, but I don't like it here in the tri cities. So. Um, anything we could do, I mean, I do look forward to reading this as well, but uh, I do believe more needs to be done. So. Yeah, whatever we could come up with and hopefully be stronger language.
All right, I'm seeing second bites of the apple here for same topic?
Yes.
Okay, great. Uh, I think uh, Councilmember Campos, you're up first.
Yeah, just very briefly, what's our timeline for this, uh, Mr. Ferguson?
So, the uh, it's it's, for this is is pretty much now or never. So, because uh, they're meeting, apparently it's gonna be a one-day session. They're saying it's it's this or or nothing. That's what uh, folks are are uh, prognosticating. So, um, it sounds like they're gonna be in town for one day. Uh, and uh, this is uh, the the four different caucuses have agreed that this is what uh, they're gonna. To try to get their members to support, and it's pretty much gonna be this, uh, it sounds like, or or nothing, uh, or. Something just by uh, one of or two of the caucuses that that would have a majority. So, um, I will also be, uh, or I would like to also update you that our. Prosecutors, um, um, Mike Rio and Jessica Volz, they uh, met with the other departments after um. Uh, the meeting last week where we talked about uh, what the next steps were. Uh, and talked about what that ordinance would look like in terms of a regional approach to make sure we were all on the same page. Uh, after a lot of discussion, there were some differences between some of the versions. It looks like uh, most of the folks agreed to uh, move forward with the Kent approach. Uh, which they recently passed their uh, ordinance. Um, I believe it was about a week and a half ago. So, um, yeah, so that's uh, that that is also. In process, um, and so, and until we're not allowed to pass that because we've been preempted, um. That that process is continuing. So nobody's uh, gonna stop working on that until we're told to stop.
Okay, so just a little piece of information I think I missed out on is, and I'm reading between the lines, they're gonna be meeting between the time. We meet again for next council meeting. We decided we're not meeting on the twenty-ninth.
They're meeting tomorrow.
So they're meet, okay, that's what I'm looking for. That's that's what I needed to know. Okay. Uh, again, my, I'm still the same.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown.
Um, thank you, Mayor Protem Maloney. Um, Mr. Ferguson, um. Not that I'm excited about zero notice, um, and then we have to make a decision. I do want to move forward. I don't want it to be stagnant. I'm not really excited about not having the opportunity. To address some of the nuances that are in there, I'll use your word, um, nuances that are in there. To make this a little bit more tight for me, because when I hear about, you know, a needle. But are we looking at the needle or we're talking about just the drug that's in there to help the person, but then the needle can just move around freely? Uh, the, this is what's a little bit off to the left for me. So, that would require more conversation. And how to take a look at that. But I do agree, and I'm standing firm, we do need to move forward to make something happen. I don't like not having the opportunity to talk about those, again, nuances, those little things that are in there. Cause we're saying, let's save them, but the needle or et cetera can be on the streets. And that's. That's kind of backwards to me, to be quite honest. So that's just my comment, but I would love the opportunity to be able to do that. So. Being pressured into it does not feel good, but we do need to move forward. So I'm gonna change my stance, but that's just my comment. Thank you.
And and just for the record, we we got, as soon as we got it, we tried to get it to you guys. So, um, yeah, it is what it is unfortunately.
All right, so I'll I'll bring a couple comments and and questions for you, uh, Mr. Ferguson, please, um, if you if you don't mind. Um. I know you've had little chance to analyze this. Um, and that's what I'm missing as well, is. How different is this than what the regional approach was looking at? Um, what we would be targeting if we were to pass our own ordinance? Like, are we night and day difference? Is there a couple nuances here, but it's all within the same envelope? Um, you know, I I don't wanna be, you know, I I'm comfortable marching on our own direction until they voted and passed this. Um, it, nothing's done. We know that. Uh, we did not expect a set special session this year to talk about this. We expected them to get their job done. Um, and so here, nonetheless, here we are. So, um, I I just really don't want any of that that work to stop. But that's a part of the analysis that I guess I'm missing in terms of what would be a report from staff. Because you did not have time to prepare that, and I understand that fully. Can you try to give me the Reader's Digest version of what would be in what's being discussed locally and when the in the in the Kent option? I have not read that. I don't know what's in there compared to this bill here.
Well, I'm laughing because I uh, actually caught up with Ms. Volz at Safeway. Uh, we were uh, getting carts and uh, that's where I found out what exactly uh, was gonna. Be in kind of the regional approach. But essentially what it is, uh, is uh, as I understand it, it was still gonna, uh, it would be gross misdemeanor. Uh, it would. Uh, I don't think it would have the one hundred and eighty day limitation. Uh, again, I don't want to talk out of school and and and, but that wasn't, I had never heard of that before. Uh, it, I don't think that uh, it was gonna, we were going to still have the paraphernalia. Um, misdemeanor uh, or gross misdemeanor and then uh, believe. Uh, oh, the the biggest distinction, uh, I think between that and what I've read so far and here was. Uh, the regional approach was gonna contain uh, provision that would allow uh, essentially a deferred prosecution under a two-year requirement. Currently, under state law, there's uh. Um, the, okay, uh, so there's currently uh, um. Issues with regard to um, the ability to have a deferred prosecution for uh, instead of the five-year, uh, have a essentially a mini-local. Um, ability to have a a deferred prosecution. So it wouldn't be under the state law. We would have our own. Essentially two-year ability to go through treatment and meet certain requirements and then to be able to, um. Uh, look at that. I was told to check my email and that may mean because our lobbyist is correcting me where I'm wrong. So. Let me go, uh, but with that, I'll I'll uh, I'll jump on here real quick and while you ask your next question.
Great, thank you. Cause what I'm what I'm looking at here is, um, this happens a lot during normal session, right? Something happens where there's a, there's a, something being brought forward or changes to existing bill that are. A surprise to all of us. And we as a council are not gonna have an obligation to 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 make decisions. Um, and so. I I I, well, y'all know how how important it is to me that the work that goes into the staff reports and making sure this is well-supported. Um, but unfortunately, with the way, the speed the legislature moves, um, sometimes, either sometimes it's glacially slow, um, followed by blazingly fast. Um, and so I I, well, I'd typically be loath to 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 weigh in on something, anything until I got the analysis from staff as to what I should be caring about. Um, you know, uh, this is probably gonna move with or without us. We don't need to do this. This isn't, we don't, we can't stop what the state's doing. They're probably not waiting on our opinions. Um, this is, this would help our local legislators, I I think, um, if if nothing else, provide them some additional cover and feedback. And I guess that's what. Really what I see are are, what we're being asked by staff to do. Um, separately, like I said, I don't, I don't see any reason to stop with what we're doing right now until until we're we're done, done. And if there's something that we aren't preempted on that we wanna. And that we wanna have a regional approach on, I'm very interested in understanding those options. So, um, I don't want to slow down the work on that until until we're there. Um, so yeah, I just wanted to, I guess, advise my fellow council members after lobbying a lot in in Olympia, it just, this happens. Um, and we get on the board or or you get run over. Um, that's, that's all the options we have in front of us. So, um, Mr. Ferguson, do you have any new information to share with us?
It sounds like, uh, yeah, uh, Ms. Murray, uh, wanted to make sure that uh, that we knew that they are voting tomorrow. Uh, there won't be a whole lot of opportunity uh, for any kind of uh, other further edits. Uh, and that uh, uh, supporting it would be uh, uh, consistent with how we've uh, uh, been engaged to date so far on on the legislation.
Great, no, I appreciate that. Cause I know as as it was moving through the process, um, I was reading the updates from um, from our um, our contractors up in Olympia that were very much sharing. We've pivoted, Olympia's doing this thing now, and they're doing this thing now, and we're uh, we've we've, I think, stayed in the, under the approach that we need something in place. Uh, I'll be honest, I'm I'm fairly surprised that that both possession and public use are gross misdemeanors. That's a great improvement from the previous version of law. And I think really puts us much more in line with what we're looking for. So when I look through through a lot of these things, I don't see anything here that 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 raises me up and says. I can't in good conscience say this would be okay. Um, would it be what we'd negotiate our ourselves? No. I'm I'm sure it's not. If we were navigating locally, would it look like this? Probably not quite. Um, I'm I'm concerned with the um. With with a lack of funding for um, um, local uh, prosecutions. Gross misdemeanors are pro- pro- uh, I believe are processed locally. Who who? Mr. Ferguson proc- prosecute, or sorry, who adjudicates uh, gross misdemeanors? Is that our municipal court that'll be doing a portion of that, or is it all?
It depends. It depends on whether uh, it's a state law, a state crime uh, that's charged, uh, that would be through district court, Franklin County. Uh, they they would process those. If we have adopted uh, something that's uh, RC, that's a gross misdemeanor in the RCW and we've adopted it by reference, we can prosecute that in our municipal court.
Okay, so, uh, cause I'm worried, of course, about resources, right? We're we're struggling. We know that we're struggling to find court resources, um. Uh, defense attorneys and prosecutors, those are, these are high demand right now. So, anything that adds to our local need for for additional. Um, resources like that is something that could end up being, putting us in a very untenable situation. So. Um, there there's lots of challenges I see with this approach and with with how it's going here and the lack, again, a lack of funding from the state to help bolster. Local communities who are being asked to shoulder, again, a lot of the um, a lot of the burden here. So, anyways, my, what I, so I guess, summarize that up to us, to a, to a sentence. I don't see any reason not for why I would not support this pending much more research from time we don't have. So, um. Yeah, I guess that's where I where I stand. Um, any, any other comments from council?
So, make a quick point of clarification, uh, Mr. Fergan, just for the record. Um, I was not fussing or chastising you directly. I could come up, so I just wanted to make sure, just for point of clarification, I was just.
I didn't take it that way.
The comment, you know, made that, you know, we didn't have enough time to deal with this or take a look at it and see it from all different angles that would benefit. The city of Pasco, which is all of our passions. So we want to make sure we're making decisions that, um. That is healthy for all of us. So that, I just making a point of clarification.
No, I appreciate it.
I was not having a fit or a moment. Okay, I was just expressing there was not enough time. I appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. Uh, Councilmember Roach.
So what I hear is we're stuck in a, in a pickle. Um, and I guess, Mr. Ferguson, I heard you ask us what the, that the local delegation in Olympia is looking for. Our input. But has, have they or our city's lobbyists um, indicated to you what their position is on this? And are they in favor of it?
I, I don't wanna uh, speak out of school, but my understanding was that they were in support of that. So, um, I'm sure I'll get an email from Ms. Murray immediately if that's not the case, but. Uh, but no, I I think uh, this was the uh, the best alternative. Let me see. Uh, that's, I was, uh, I understand you're discussing, uh, so it looks like um. Proposal was developed by bipartisan negotiating team is likely the best proposal for the cities that the legislature can produce. The alternative is no bill or bill entirely developed by. Um, uh, the Democratic Caucus. That's essentially the analysis.
Thank you.
Um, I would note also that AWC, the Association Washington Cities, is supporting this bill. And on a lot of matters like this, we do end up following their lead to, to some extent, they do have more resources to research this uh, quickly and often have a seat at the table differently from us. So, um, with that, I'd ask this this council, we have two, two, we have three options in front of us as I see it. We can pass a, a formal direction to staff to um, in support or in opposition of this. We can give head nods as sort of a consensus that allows staff to continue doing what they would have done anyways, um, which in this case sounds like. Uh, is can, would be consistent from, if I understood correctly, uh, Mr. Ferguson, from what you read from, um, uh, Ms. Murray's um, email, that. Generally, the lobbyists would recommend we continue to support this. Or we can vote to, or we we can vote to in some form or fashion, indicate some sort of disapproval of this, that we do not want our legislators to support this, and we'd like. And the city's Pasco's position is is to oppose. So I think those are the three options in front of us. Um, looking for either a, either a motion or some. Discussion around what would you all like to do. Um, I will say that I I I hate putting, do doing a formal vote quickly. I'm concerned about that. Um, I think that when when Eric starts having to put on his uh, his full-on law, citing. Um, I think that when when uh, Eric starts having to put on his uh, his full-on law deciding case law in terms of what council getting in trouble for. That makes me real nervous, um, but the implications, I think the negative, potential negative implications are very minor. Uh, it would undo something that we don't have control over anyway, so, um, I I'm, I'm really pretty ambivalent on which direction we go. Um, my my, I believe, I I I do personally support this, I believe as a council, uh, that this is the right direction for us to continue to support this, one way or the other, how we provide that feedback. Uh, Councilmember Roach.
I have just one more question, because I'm I'm staying true to form in that it's hard for me to. Feel like I'm making a sound decision on something when I haven't had a chance to thoroughly read through it myself, and so. I know for a fact that our PD's ear is probably to the ground on this, because this affects their day-to-day work. And Deputy Cook, I don't wanna put you on the spot, but guess what, we got put on the spot, and I feel like you're probably our in-house expert and know. At least probably what the buzz has been, because in the last twenty-four hours, we've all heard that legislators are getting called back to Olympia. For special session, and we knew that, we knew what it was for, uh, but we haven't had a chance to digest this. Have you heard from your staff from within PD leadership, um, is there support for this? Version of the Blake decision?
So we have, we have not read that, what what is that? I know that the discussions uh, with the tri-city agencies, I was there, it is the gross misdemeanor. Obviously, we would like all the tools that we can have to help keep our community safe. Um, I'm not sure that this includes all of the tools that we were hoping for. Um, other than that, I don't have a lot of input about the preemption stuff, so.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, well, one one position we take in our legislative priorities is um, support with concerns, um, that's, I guess, an option in front of us as well. Um, cause I I think I certainly have concerns, but I do also uh, support this, so, um, council, what what do we wanna do, um?
I've got my light on.
Oh, I missed it, thank you.
It's all good, um, I just got word from one of our folks from up in Olympia that uh, the vote's supposed to take tech. Take part at ten o'clock tomorrow, so they do need something from us, uh, that said. I still am of the position that anything that gives away, whether it's better, uh. Our jurisdiction or our ability to enforce different laws that we might want at a higher threshold, I will not support that, that said, I I I. I think that, like I said, trading horses, this is better than the the no horse that we were gonna get. Um, personally, I'm not going to support it, but I don't want that to sway anyone in any way, but it sounds like they need a decision tonight. Of what we're doing, whether it's, as you said, caveated, support with concerns, or, you know, the Barry Bonds asterisk or not, you know?
Councilmember Serrano, do you have a opinion as to what form we would like to give that support or rejection?
Well, I mean, I I think, uh, to the extent that the body wants to make a formal motion, I would say that the, that we make a motion. Um, you know, again, personally, I don't support it, but if the majority of the bodies supports it, and then maybe express a couple of concerns. Um, that we would be preempted from enforcing uh, certain items like posi- uh, possession or.
Paraphernalia.
You know, the paraphernalia, some of the zoning regulations, again, um, regardless of all dissent, but. I I think that's probably the best you're gonna get tonight.
Good, thank you. Any other opinions on form, um, I will entertain a motion if someone wants to wing it, um, or we could ask Mr. Ferguson to. Very quickly draft up a sentence for somebody while we have, while we've concluded our miscellaneous discussion on other items, and revisit this before we adjourn tonight. Um, do you have opinions?
Uh, if Mr. Ferguson would draft up the motion with concerns, I would be happy to get it kicked off.
I'm also begrudgingly go with the, for with concerns, I get I, very disappointed uh, in our state, but uh. Seems, happens every year, I get more disappointed with their state, but uh, again, if this is better than what we have, I guess we'll go for it, but uh, again. Definitely want to see our PD be able to enforce and make our city nice, and uh, doesn't seem like it's gonna happen, but it is better, so. Um, yeah, with concern, serious concern, put it that way.
Appreciate that, uh, my lesson last year from being disappointed in the state is, don't volunteer angry, um, it just makes a lot of work for you. Um, alright, um, I don't see how the light's on, so we'll go ahead and uh, let Mr. Ferguson continue his his work. And then, um, yeah, we'll go on to other items before we wrap back up to Blake.
Yeah, just uh, what I was kinda gonna piggyback off on, you made a comment about, you know, we're ten minutes away from nowhere, you know, discussions like this. Um, reminds me of how nice it is and why I took up, you guys are all familiar with and probably sick of hearing me say how much I love turkey hunting, but man. It literally, you know, McNary, McNary's, you can't hunt turkey there, but McNary's literally just five minutes away from my house. Um, there are wild turkeys in Sacagawea, which the visitor center there at Sacagawea is super cool, if you've never been there, go. Um, you'll you'll probably see more turkeys than I've ever seen in my entire life, um, but, I I mean, we live in such a cool little place. That a lot of people take for granted on the ability to get away from the the day-to-day, and uh, I just. Wanted to to piggyback off that, I've really been taking advantage of that, I think, uh, you know, the silver lining to COVID is it got a lot of people outside. And uh, I'm I'm still continuing to do all that stuff, and I'm just having a blast, maybe one of these days I'll take up motorcycles like Councilman Milne, but. Uh, for now, for now, I'll just sleep in my truck and have a good time outside.
I appreciate that, any other miscellaneous discussion not related to Blake's decision before we return back? I I will bring up the um, um, in terms of Vinnie's Bakery, I I didn't wanna address that at the time we were moving forward and um, wanted just in miscellaneous discussion, but um. This is an area where I really, I I worry about our small businesses all the time, I mean, during COVID, you know, we took the opportunity to go down to downtown, visit a lot of these businesses that were really suffering. And we're able to provide some relief, thank goodness, um, but. You know, if there's anything we can do that we would have to open up to any participants. Um, and we'd need to look at those requirements about whether or not it would be of value to to revisit. The sort of uh, COVID relief we pla- we pro- provided before, so. I'm interested in that analysis to understand where our different, where our ARPA dollars are and what else can be done, um, I know Vinnie's Bakery is. Is has been a huge part of my family's life, we love going there, and it is, I I just can't express how. How saddened I am that they are, that door, their doors are shut, but Craig Maloney as a council member. Needs to do what's best for the city, and in the ways that city requires um, me to take action, so. I'm interested in understanding what we can do as programs, um, understand the 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 fact that that the only way to do that is by. Um, evaluating what funds we have available through programs like ARPA, which is specifically designed above and beyond what a city can normally do for a small business. Or any individual business, um, but, um. I guess I would say that, um, I hope the community can help rally around uh, Vinnie, um, individually and and help. And help him get back on his feet, so we don't lose such a wonderful man from our community.
We will be coming back to council soon with a review of all the ARPA funding that's been. Al- allocated so far, spent so far, and what remains, and different uh, aspects of the ARPA program that. Um, can cover again or in more detail, so it should be happening soon.
Great, thank you, Director Buckley. Alright, I I don't see any other lights on, uh, Mr. Ferguson, are you ready? Are we gonna do an email, are we gonna do a, are you gonna do a, uh, more like a reciting of a pledge, where you're gonna read off some of the words, someone's gonna echo you and go back and forth?
Let's do that, it's gonna.
Sounds brilliant, um, Councilmember Roach, you are interested in potentially making a motion?
Sure.
Right, so uh, I would say, uh, I move to support.
I move to support.
In gross second substitute Senate bill.
In gross second substitute Senate bill.
Five-five-three-six.
Five-five-three-six.
With concerns.
With concerns.
Alright, we have a motion in front of us, do I hear a second?
Second there.
Saying it by Councilmember Brown, gonna ask for a roll call vote on this, please? Oh, I'm sorry, you're absolutely right, um, i- i- any discuss, any further discussion on this item?
If there's other concerns specifically, I feel like this is probably a good time to put those in.
Great, um, I think if we were to, I think we maybe not part of necessarily part of the motion, but as part of the body of that.
Yeah.
Uh, certainly, I think I heard, I think we heard consensus around uh, the paraphernalia, um, is of strong concern to folks. Um, preemption of local control was another strong, um, um, concern, um, but I think I was hearing echoed around the council. Um, and and funding for resources for both prosecution and treatment programs. Was there any other, um, any other concerns that anyone would like communicated? Okay, I'm seeing no further concerns?
Do we need to now modify that, if we're gonna ex?
Uh, depends, uh, was the goal to add those to the motion, uh, or to just express the concerns generally?
Just to express the concerns generally, wasn't my intent to add it to the motion.
I would agree with that, Brown said.
Excellent, alright, um, if we could please have a roll call?
Yes, Councilmember Roach? Yes. Councilmember Serrano?
No.
Councilmember Campos?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Milne? Council, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Maloney?
Yes.
That's six-four and one against, I mean.
Five-four and one against.
Thank you. Five-four and one against.
Alright, motion passes, um, thank you, uh, Mr. Ferguson, for what takes a lot of work at very last minute and in a role that. Must make you absolutely squeamish, your job is to protect the city, and in four hour, in less than four hours to tell it to for.
This is my uh, least preferred option, but uh, sometimes you gotta do what you gotta do, so.
So I appreciate your support and your your professionalism and your 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 speed at trying to answer our questions.
Thank you, no, I appreciate you saying that.
Uh, Councilmember Serrano.
Can we, uh, I guess I'd like to pulse the body here, um, you know, I would like. To see that tri-city regional approach move forward, I realize that this thing could be adopted, and that could be null and void by the time we actually implement it. I think, uh, without showing too much of a hand, there's potential litigation on unfunded mandates, there's potential litigation on standing for municipalities. Who are preempted, and if we're able to pass something, adopt it. Seek to implement and potentially implement it, and then have it overturned within the time period, whether or not that's been adopted from the legislative body. It's won't have been signed by Governor Inslee likely, I I think we present a case for standing, and so far as the city may or may not have appetite. To sue the state of Washington on its poor legislation. So, at a minimum, it's one, gonna show the community we're proactive, and two, potentially puts us in a much better position. If there is ensuing litigation, so that we're not left out from that table, it's a negotiation standpoint, so, that's my position.
Any uh, follow-up on Councilmember Serrano's suggestions and comment there, uh, Councilmember Campos?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Pro Tim Maloney, no, Councilman Serrano, you bring up a good point about a regional approach, something that was in front of us. Uh, very early on in my my tenure up here on the on the dais was, uh, BF Cog came up and said. That they would be willing to work on regional problems, that maybe the city doesn't necessarily have the bandwidth to, or that they just. Want somebody else to take a regional approach to, and to me, it seems like BF Cog would be a prime candidate and organization to try to. Get out in front of this, and uh, Councilman Brown, you can correct me if I'm wrong, my entire duration on BF Cog was really focused around. Regional transportation, in my opinion, I think, our Good Roads Association, you know, Ben Franklin Transit, just how we. How we interact and inter-local uh, ways. Accom- accomplishing that, we don't need them to accomplish our regional transportation plans, we need them to start tackling some of these. Uh, you know, big picture issues, I know that they're tapped for resources, but that's, that's my mind, is that it would be nice to have them weigh in and. Uh, I think Mayor Pro Tim Maloney, I think you've said this before, BF Cog, I think, has the ability to lobby. Uh, a little bit differently than we do, they they're more hands-on from what I've I've been told, but I've yet to see that, and again, this isn't necessarily a. A knock at BF Cog, I, um, I just, the regional approach is very important, again, Councilman Serrano. I'm glad he brought that up, because we we need to be in this unified with uh, Ben and Franklin Counties.
Thank you for those comments, uh, Councilmember Campos, um, I I agree there's some value in. Having BF Cog take a regional approach on a number of things, uh, even a stronger approach on transportation would be uh, welcome, from uh, my perspective. Um, I know we'll be moving quickly, quickly on this one, so I'm not sure that they will have an opportunity to get them engaged and up to speed, but certainly, I think that those sort, these sort of issues, I think having a. Uh, a regional agency that we come to and and coordinates this and facilitates that, that's, you know, um, would be really beneficial. Um, Councilmember Brown?
Just gonna add, there is an opportunity this week, I'll be meeting, um, on the nineteenth at ten AM, so. Here it is, it's right here in front of us, so we'll give it a shot, and we'll report back to you all after meeting with BF Cog on this week.
I think you, Councilmember Brown, um, I'll I'll certainly agree, there's no reason, like I said, we, the the legislatures meet tomorrow, there's no guarantee they will pass something. Um, so even if if nothing else was in front of us, we should not stop moving forward. Um, and we should make sure that we as a region, we need to be coordinated regionally more often, we just, we just don't, we don't do that very well, and this is an example of a time where maybe we're all moving in the same direction. And we can, we can keep moving in that direction, so, I'm interested in us continuing to do the work, so we can understand what the differences are going to be between what we would want ideally. And hopefully, the state will pass something, and then we will be able to fill in whatever gaps we need to with local laws. Um, I don't know if that'll happen or not, but that's that's TBE, so I I I guess I'm I'm in support of us continuing to move down that effort. I would note that, um, we don't meet again until the fifth of June, um. So we have a couple weeks for that process to play out, and for our. Uh, uh, PD and legal staff to continue to work through what those nuances are and what our options are in front of us, so. I hope by June fifth, we'll be able to have a report from staff that helps us understand those, we can, we can make some decisions and have some conversation about what this actually looks like. Uh, Deputy Chief Cook, I saw your light come on, and uh.
Oh, I was just gonna share with you that all the agencies were, uh, in that meeting this last week, and they are engaged.
Excellent, thank you very much. Alright, any other items in front of us, um, do we have su- sufficient communication staff there, uh, feels very well on both those points? Both our um, our motion that 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 was what, that passed, as well as um, um, further direction to continue the work that we are currently doing. Um, any questions from staff, I wanna be crystal clear that we are, what our, what our input is, if we, if there's anything more that we need to provide, I'd like to give it right now. So we're not waiting until June fifth if. Yeah, so we don't have a special session, so we don't talk, come up on on June fifth and and um, have a bunch of questions that we don't have, haven't had time to process yet. Excellent, alright, um, any other, last call for miscellaneous discussion from this uh, this body? Seeing done, um, we have, uh, do we have need for an executive session tonight? We have no need for executive session, that that's excellent, which means item fourteen adjourned, thank you all so much for sticking this out, this was warm. Um, uh, li- ladies in the front, thank you so much for coming and sharing, I know it's difficult to get up in front of us and talk, we hear you. Uh, we are concerned too, and we will do what we can, so thank you very much for coming out. Alright, and with that, we are adjourned, thank you all.